Okay.
Can we keep going? The time? Nope, not yet.
Oh, isn't it?
Are you expecting anybody? Anybody else?
You turn those mics up, man.
Yeah, we still have three minutes.
You're all good to go.
Okay, call to order of the meeting of the planning and zoning commission for October 17, 2019, and we'll call Ms. Pirana.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Keefe is absent, excused, and Mr. Pollak is also excused, or absent, or leaving. Okay, call to the public for any items that's not on the agenda. Anybody have anything? Okay, seeing nobody, close the call to the public, and move to item one for discussion and possible action, providing the mayor and city council with a recommendation regarding establishing a permanent easement across city property. So, Joe, you want to give us the rundown?
The Public Works Department didn't want that property to go before you, that you got, when you did it before, for a property swap. What they would like, what they wanted is, they wanted to put Kevin's easement across our, across the city's property for David and any other homeowners beyond that. And then establishing right-of-way on the property that encroaches onto the right-of-way.
Do, we don't have any, do we have a map showing this, where the easement might go here?
It would, it would follow pretty much, I think, what you guys had done last time.
Can you remind us what we did last time, please?
I don't have that information with me, Mark.
Was this, this was going to be a transfer of city property?
Yes, that was, it was going to be a transfer that was approved and was going to go to city council, but then it got, this one got bumped back because of opposition from the city.
Okay, so we are establishing an easement across this property to provide access to Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, and well, there's no, there's no requirement that this easement be, that you guys review this. I think that's a good way for the city council to be comfortable with what's going on.
And how, let me ask, Danny, can you come up?
Sure.
Can you kind of enlighten us on how this easement would benefit you?
Yeah, unfortunately, the survey that was conducted, apparently you had that last meeting, and now it's absent. Do you have the...
Is that this one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, sure. Would you like me to come closer and describe that one more carefully, or?
Um, here, I can hand it to you in the chairs.
Okay.
Oh, wow. That helps.
Even better with the lifetime.
This is only Exhibit B. This is only, there's portion, there were actually two exhibits. Do you have the other one there, Mark?
No, he doesn't.
No. So, this, this, this looks like it was a survey of the city property that was going to be transferred.
That's correct. You got there's...
So, can you...
Do you have the other one, Joe?
It's in your somewhere.
Okay, oh, well. Okay, this, this Exhibit B here illustrates my ownership that will be now, oh, good. Okay, yeah.
Do you think I should go make, would you guys like me to go make copies of this? I just say copy. Sure. Okay. So, we're looking at some kind of easement granted to you across the city property to access your parcel, correct?
Yeah, this is, this is my contribution here, that you're looking at Exhibit B.
Yeah.
And then where it says Exhibit B, where line eight is there...
Yeah.
Is where the, where the city dedication, or easement dedication will be. And then there's also, you'll see later, a common area that the, the neighbors, there was this solidarity with the neighbors about a public, and also an easement for the public, so that, so that, you see that little road that goes straight down from line seven?
Yeah.
That's so they can pull in and then back, and then, you know, they have, they have to use that for a turnaround.
Right.
And then I also, you'll see later that it'll also be, it'll link up with that, with that easement that the city will dedicate to me up above that dotted line, up where it says Exhibit B.
Yeah.
Well, you'll see that when he comes back.
And so that area that's got Exhibit B, well, let's see what Joe got here.
This was, you know, prepared by this professional, Glenn Summers. Okay, very good. Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, a little bit confusing, Exhibit B exhibit.
Another exhibit.
But, okay, yeah, this is an old, this is an older, there was a more correct presentation that didn't have, it didn't have the Exhibit B, Exhibit B, I crossed it out, anyway. Okay, you see then on that new drawing that we just got, where it says subject parcel?
Yes.
Okay, that is the, the public, the public dedication.
Now, the public dedication, you mean that is city property?
It could, see, the whole, do you see on the first drawing that we got, Exhibit B?
Yeah.
Where it says line eight, and then there's a dotted line, and then, then this lot that goes up like that?
Yeah.
Okay, everything up here was dedicated to the city at the turn of the century. So, everything like north of that, the city owned, so yes, to answer your question, parcel, subject parcel...
Belongs to the city.
Belongs to the city.
And so, your parcel is where in relationship to that?
My parcel is...
Parcel affected on this other Exhibit B.
Is, my parcel is here and here.
Okay.
That little jig-jog is Lot 85.
Okay.
And then the city property is all, this was an exception way back in the teens, okay?
Okay.
That somebody bumped out into the city property, it was apparently sold by the city way back then.
So, the easement that we're, that's being proposed here would cut across city property off of Adams. In other words, it would be a cut off through the right-of-way to access your parcel that says parcel affected.
Yeah, well, it's a two-part situation if you go to this drawing over here.
Yeah.
Okay, the subject parcel, which is city property, okay?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be dedicated to the public.
Okay.
Not to me. Or, in other words, it would be an easement dedicated to the public.
Oh, it's to extend the right, to extend the, to expand the right-of-way of Adams Avenue?
Yes, it does, because it goes, it goes up, out of the Bisbee Township into that other huge area that goes all the way over the mountain to Zacatecas.
Uh-huh.
So, that, but that's also owned by the city.
Okay.
But it's not part of the old Bisbee plaque.
Okay.
You know, which would be the Bisbee Township.
Mark, the current, the current road there for Adams Avenue encroaches onto property that's David, that's the property, that's part that's shaded there.
It's still owned by the, I mean...
Oh.
So, our asphalt, our asphalt is, is partially onto his property.
Okay, so I'm a little confused.
I hope I'm being clear, but the, this parcel here, which is all on city property, this is all on city property.
Yeah.
This here is what they're giving to me, the easement they're giving to me.
Oh, okay.
Here.
Okay.
This is what I'm giving to them, which is on the road.
Oh, okay.
Which is down here.
Which we're really not considering.
Okay.
You see where Adams Avenue goes down?
Yeah.
This is what I would be giving to them. There was a better drawing, I apologize that we don't, we don't have that for you.
Okay.
I was gonna bring a copy of it, too.
So, the bottom line is that the city is willing to grant an easement for you, to you, for some access to your property? That would provide access, is that what essentially?
Yeah, provide access to the building lot, and then...
But not to build on, or anything like that?
Oh, no, no, it's just an easement.
Okay.
It's in English, English easement only.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, where I'm gonna be building is on the little jig-jog out here.
Okay.
And it just comes up to that, as you can see on this drawing.
Yeah.
Here's the, here's the little lot that jig-jogs out, and it just comes right up to it.
I got you.
Yeah, and then, so, I would be able to pass over this, obviously, because it's public, and then come on to my, to the easement that's dedicated to me here.
I got you.
And then those other folks could turn around on that area as well.
Okay.
And then this is what the city gets by the, for the exchange.
Okay.
I hope that's clear.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Should we sit?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, some discussion among commissioners, anybody have questions about that? Is it clear?
No.
The city, it sounds like the city is owns, we had considered this chunk of property to be dedicated wholly to David, not to dedicate, but sold to David, transfer of city property. Instead, we're being asked to look at an easement across that property. The city will still have the fee, will be the owner of that in fee title, fee simple, but there will be a dedicated easement across that city property in order to give, grant access to Mr. Hanson for...
That's because he did it here, or not?
That would be, yeah, easement something that's gonna go across this portion of the city property.
It's not this?
No, that's, it sounds like David is going to be dedicating that part of his parcel to, as an easement for, to the public.
Could I approach to that?
Sure.
Okay, let me try to get this a little more clear for you. If you look at this drawing here, if you impose this, okay, here, if you impose that on here, this is where this is.
Right.
Okay, so that, this is this, and that, what they're, what we're looking to do is, is exchange easements. I give an easement to the city over the roadway, which I own the property, they give me this easement for access to my lot.
This easement here, is that what we're giving you?
No, you're, you're giving me this, only.
Okay, so this is as far as this, it's not even marked on here?
Yeah, this is, this here is the public dedication.
I understood that.
Okay.
I was confused in terms of what parcel were actually...
And are you satisfied with that compromise?
Uh, yeah, I am, I mean, the, when I first worked with Peter, we were looking at an actual deed of land exchange, and the city engineer didn't like that, so now, so we're going to an easement exchange. Instead, deed it just an easement, we're both gonna grant each other easements. I grant the city an easement over the property I own on the current roadway, Adams Avenue, they give me the uphill easement so I can have better access to my lot.
And that's acceptable, too?
That's, that's what it's for.
So, this here's, they're giving you easement here so you can build into this area here, or somewhere...
You see where the lot, the dotted line on the lot? Yeah, that's it, that's where the building site will be.
Yeah, but here's the easement they're gonna give you is here.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's about equal property. The, the other drawing had the acreage on it and everything, and it's, it's common acreage.
There's, there's other land up beyond that that is developable in the future, and to have an easement there is a little bit cleaner for the city than to, for David to grant us an easement across his property, or the other people easements across his property. It's just a little cleaner this way, is what the engineer thought.
All right, so there's no suggested motion here, but I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one question.
I'm sure, sir.
So, what, if any, Joe, do you see as a potential negative, or a potential disagreement, or...
I see this as win-win for everybody.
Win-win?
Yes, definitely. I don't, I don't foresee, you know, and I'm, I don't always foresee everything either, but I don't foresee this being, ever being an issue, because it's gonna be able to grant easement. There's property up there beyond, that's really nice property that could be developed, and it's gonna be able to preserve their access to.
And the easement will be just given to David, or like once, I'm sorry, once he kicks the bucket, will that easement pass on to the next person?
It will be, it will be an easement for the, for public, is what I believe, not just David.
Right, it would be not, probably a non-exclusive easement.
It should be recorded, the attorney will probably, I think, record that with the parcel, with the, with the recorder's office.
As legal access to the parcel.
If it's recorded with it, it goes with the property, always.
Not that I'm trying to kill you off.
Yeah, I think so, I think that's the legal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the way it will work.
Okay.
And the same way with the public easement, as well.
Got you, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recommend, for a recommendation to city council on this.
Okay.
I need a motion from somebody else.
I move.
Move.
Oh, pardon me.
Okay.
Let's get a motion here, I'll entertain a motion.
I know that the city staff, or that the city established an easement across the property.
They recommend to the city council.
Recommend to the city council.
And there's a second over here?
Yeah.
Okay, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, two nays. Okay, number two, public hearing to reconsider an application for transfer of city property, discussion possible, recommendation to the mayor and city council. So, this is one that we have revisited, that we had visited earlier in our last meeting, and my understanding is that we're revisiting it because this particular transfer of city property must go to auction. Is that correct, Joe?
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
And could you tell us why, what the threshold is, for this be going to auction versus just now, I said?
Anything valued more than $5,000 has to, has to go to a public auction, and it, the only way that you, that you, if it was part of people, sometimes we have parcels that people have been parking on for years, and they didn't know that it wasn't theirs, or they've been using it, so it's, they've been used, it's been associated with that property, so they were able to buy it outright without an option. But outside of that and the $5,000 limit, everything has to go to auction.
Okay, so this is a consideration of request for transfer of city parcel APN 103-72-051A, located at Eightfold Douglas Road, and the applicant wishes to acquire this parcel used as a business location, applicant Mr. Conklin. All public news requirements have been met, so I will call for your report, Joe. I guess you just gave it, is that pretty much it, your staff report?
Yeah, let me, I have Peter's here. Although, I'm very familiar with this, too. There we are. The property has a dilapidated building on it, that's actually on the city's bacon- abandoned dilapidated property list, and we'd, we'd like to get it taken care of by somebody, and it's a liability that the city isn't able to step up to take care of. The property's not doing any good, we'd like to get it fixed up, and it's in the public interest and the city's interest to put it into private hands.
And as a commission, we voted on, in the affirmative, to recommend this being transferred to Mr. Conklin in our last meeting, so for those who weren't there, we did do that. The reason it's coming back to us is because it wasn't advertised as a transfer of city property that had to go to auction, as opposed to outright sale, so that's why we're seeing a real deal.
And by going to public auction, it's, it, it doesn't go exclusively to Todd, it can go to anybody who can outbid him.
Right.
So, it's, it sets up a, to where it'll, the property will find its own value if it's higher than 30 grand.
Okay.
Which is what I suggested.
So, I'll call on Mr. Conklin to give us any further information about this.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good.
So, just to reiterate, I plan on using the building for a business, store equipment, stuff of that nature. Building's in horrible shape, if any of you guys have seen it, the roof is caving in, there's wood rod everywhere, so my plan is to come in and salvage the building, fix it up, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, you guys have any questions on me, or?
Nope. Anybody?
Yeah, so, when we did, I'm going back to when we were doing something up by your house, and what was that for? What was that transfer?
I'm kinda confused on that, too, Joel, did that, did that transfer of city property get attached to my residence at 822 C Pickface Avenue? Because I had understood that I was coming here for two items, and that, that the transfer of city property for 822C, that there was a problem in the paperwork, and then I also thought that I was coming here also for 8 Douglas Road, so...
I'd like to see what's...
We're just considering Douglas Road tonight.
I, I understand, but I'm trying to, to answer that question, so if you could look into that for me and get back to me and make sure that that...
The property transfer for yours was, was acceptable, because it was associated with your property, yes. And the paperwork all said the right thing.
Yeah, what, what was that for, though? Wasn't that...
That was to create two parking spots.
Parking spots.
Which, oh, by the way, I built the wall.
Yeah.
You guys cruise up there, check it out.
Okay, so that was to create parking, basically?
And I did what I said I would do.
Okay, gotcha.
You guys wanted a wall built, I created two parking spots, and Joel, Joel signed off on it, and I feel like that project came out very nice.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay.
So, now this is so that you can store equipment?
And I wanna run a business, so basically, I started my company and I'm in a residential neighborhood, and so I don't sell goods out of my house, I just have a service, but what I would like to do is I'd like to have a place where I could have a lay-down yard stored in the, in the building's own commercial. So, I've been doing research, and I talked to the city about potentially purchasing this one, and the city is okay with that, correct?
Absolutely.
Because of the integrity of the structure.
Gotcha.
There's this, you know, just for, how do I, blanking giggles, cruise by, check it out, and you can see how, how bad it is, you know, doors are falling off, everything's probably wooded up, the, all, the entire roof needs to get rebuilt, it's gonna be, it's gonna be expensive.
Okay, and the, and the, that rod is how big? And I see it on the, I see number eight on the dot, what's the building number nine next to it?
That's different, that building belongs to...
The other side.
That's a totally different, that's a totally different property.
Gotcha, so it's only about an acre?
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably about an acre.
About an acre.
They might be less, you know, do you know which one it is?
Yeah, number eight.
Okay.
Yeah, I see it there, and I did look that one up online, but I didn't remember.
It's less than eight.
See, so basically, we're just being asked...
And the, the building is mostly a lot of this.
Gotcha.
And I, not really announced that.
And this is just to say that we recommend that it be sold for 30, at least a minimum bid of 30?
Yeah.
I understand, thank you, thanks, Mark.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing that, I think, seeing that, closing the public hearing, and any discussion, questions? Okay, with that, entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend to the city council that this property be put up for auction, as requested.
For the minimum bid of...
For the minimum bid of, what, is that 30,000?
That was what I was recommending.
Right here. Pardon me, I... And making reference to parcel APN 103-72-051A, minimum bid of 30,000 dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, how does the commission vote, roll call? Ms. Pirana?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Re-choose.
Okay, Mr. Dunn, chair votes aye, one abstention, one and three affirmative for recommending approval.
Okay, the, the second then, was Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, I just heard it ladies, boys.
Okay.
Did, did it pass?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because I, it looks like you guys don't, might not have quorum.
We do a quorum of the number of members that we have on the commission at the moment.
Cool, thank you, guys.
Okay, last item, public hearing to reconsider an application for transfer of city property, discussion and possible recommendations to the mayor and city council. This is another reconsideration for the same purposes, I'm guessing, is that because of the value, it's greater than 5,000?
That's, yes, and it, and it wasn't...
But it is attached to the person's property.
It's attached to the property, but it wasn't, it wasn't being used as, you know, it was, its use wasn't, wasn't congruent to the property.
But is it greater than 5,000?
And it's greater than 5,000, yes.
Okay, so that's the one that...
That's the biggest one, yeah.
Okay, so reconsideration of a request for the transfer of a portion of city right-of-way located between Black Knopf U and Van Dyke Avenue. The applicant wishes to acquire a portion of city right-of-way to extend yard space. The applicant is an adjacent property owner, John Rupe, and all public news has been met. Okay, so this one is, we considered this one as well at our last meeting, and it was approved unanimously for recommending to the city council to sell it, but again, this is a property that needs to go to auction and not direct sale, so with that, we don't have an applicant here. Are you here to represent the applicants?
No.
Okay, so, and I'll open the public hearing, seeing that, I'll close it, and go to discussion on, at the last meeting, the, there was a presentation by Mr. Gardiner from the county that this was just a piece of parcel that was adjacent to this, the applicant's property, and it gets trashed, you know, littered, catches lots of litter and things like that, I believe, and, and he just wanted to be able to extend, and it's not being used by the city, and he just wanted to expand his property a little bit by acquiring. Pretty straightforward.
And where is it on this, on this, what number?
It's this little strip, number, it's this little strip of right-of-way right here, there's that number on...
So, right here?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
And the subject parcel, I believe, is that 082C.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the property that it would be turned over to.
Right.
So, that little strip is more than 5,000?
By that, by $2 a square foot? Yeah, that's what Peter had recommended on the value, so using that as the...
How does the auction process work? Is it advertised, or how does that happen?
When the, the city council will, will ask for, if there's, if anybody will pay, you know, if anybody wants, is interested in paying that, and then they ask more, and it's, it's really, it's not like, anybody give me 10, you know, but it's, it's a dignified auction, and...
At the city council meeting?
The city council, yeah, the mayor himself will, will be actually the auctioneers at work, and if any, if, if the other, if the other neighbor on the other side were interested in it, then he might be willing to bid more, I can't imagine.
Okay, is there any other staff recommendations about this?
I recommend that you, that you go with it, it's, this is a pretty useless easement across the, or right-of-way, it's going up a hillside, and nobody, nobody's gonna want to ever put a road in there. I think this is a, a good way to dispose of the property.
Okay, that chair will entertain a motion.
I move the planning and zoning commission recommend the mayor and city council public auction of this 30-foot wide x 150-foot tall portion of city right-of-way for a minimum bid of $9,000.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Pirana?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, two nays. Okay, that's all of our business items tonight. Commissioner comments, anybody have any burning questions or just comments to Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay.
The firewise program has been getting a lot of traction, and they're having a public meeting on the period of October. This brings me to a discussion that we've had over quite a period of time, and that is the code violations for abandoned dilapidated properties. At an earlier meeting, I shared that Joe Ward here had provided me a complete list of those properties, and I asked, requested those be shared with everyone on the board, and I don't know that that's occurred, no. It is certainly in my opinion that, that certainly that, in terms of firewise, the idea of trimming trees and weed whacking and so forth is certainly very, very helpful, but we've got some serious eyesores right in the middle of residential properties, of but we've got some serious eyesore right in the middle of residential properties, of which there's quite a number, quite a list of those. And I'm concerned that those are still not being addressed. There's, legal action has to be taken. That's why it's a drawn-out process. But I would like to share that list with the whole, all commission members, and that we start taking some action. At one point, we had an arrangement with the county in terms of providing us some support in terms of code enforcement, and I don't know that that ever really happened, so I need some verification.
They pulled that back, they pulled that off the table right off the kickoff. Well, I'm not supposed to talk, am I?
Yeah, this is not a discussion, but anyway, I would like that as an agenda item for further discussion as to move forward on, on taking some action on these code enforcements.
Okay. We can't, we can't, we're supposed to refrain from any discussion too.
Correct.
Okay. I want that, Joe, get that?
Right, get down.
Okay.
I also would like an agenda item. We've discussed numerous times in terms of parking. In our last meeting, we, the comment was made, well, this is, you know, we, we've discussed this, we've done studies. It's up to the council to take action, and I don't know that the council's gonna take action. Well, I, I would like to encourage the, the council to take action by a recommendation from this board.
We've made those recommendations time and time again. It's really up to staff, I think. I know, I'm sorry, we're not supposed to have a discussion about this, but-
I would like to include this on the agenda item for our next meeting for possible discussion of taking a specific recommendation rather than giving information to them, actually giving recommendation.
We'd like discussion and action.
Discussion and action, right.
And you're referring to Old Bisbee, of course?
Correct.
Correct.
So, those two agenda items, the dilapidated, well, code enforcements, abandoned dilapidated properties, reference to the firewise program that we initiated in the community, and then the second one being a recommendation to council in terms of expanding parking and whole bid.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna suggest another item, just to piggyback onto that. I would not like to see an item come to us that just says, Bisbee Planning and Zoning Commission, make a recommendation to the city council. I think that a new agreement with the county, with a new planner, in case anybody doesn't know, Mr. Gardner is, you know, working for the city of Douglas. But there is a new city planner, excuse me, county planner, Christina, who is going to be assigned special projects. So, I would like to ask Joe that you approach her, or Teresa approach her about compiling the years of work that has already been done over this parking issue so that when it comes to this commission, we have a cogent cohesive idea of what we can recommend to the city council, rather than just throwing it out there and, and leaving it to us to try to figure out, what are we gonna recommend to the city council?
Now, we have council members who have not been part of that discussion as the current years passed, and so, it would be good to bring everyone up to date in terms of the various studies that have been done, the various alternatives that have been identified for crazy parking.
And if, you know, the best that could come out of that is a recommendation that the city move on this, I mean, it seems somewhat superfluous to do that.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that. You made that statement. I would like to do again.
So, it wouldn't be a public hearing, it would just be a recommendation by, to the council. But I would like to make that recommendation. Once we've, we've got a really good idea of what the recommendation should be based on all of the information, including John Charlie's PowerPoint, including the former interns inventory of parking spaces, including the University of Arizona's study, parking study that was done last year at my direction.
Correct.
And have all of that information somehow compiled and analyzed by the county, and then come to us with some solid ideas as to what, as to what we could recommend.
Very good.
Anybody else?
I have a request. Sometimes these maps are difficult for me to put together and understand what's going on. Would it be possible to get more detail? I mean, you sent me one with streamings for next month's meeting, which was really helpful because I looked at that map and had no idea where it was.
I agree.
If there were some, pardon my creaky voice, but if there were some detail that would help us identify the location, that would be really helpful.
You want that on the agenda or?
No, I'm just asking for that assistance.
Thorough staff reports, comprehensive staff reports that tell us where things are, maps. I mean, you gotta dig back into Peter's and Paul's staff memos, maybe to see the style, what they presented, PowerPoints, and showing us where the parcels were and things.
Well, I'm not trying to make more work. It's just, I don't know how to make an informed decision here. I don't know.
I'm handcuffed on what I say right now. I'll talk to you afterward at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, sounds like we covered commissioners' comments and future agenda items. Do you have any other ones?
No, because we weren't supposed to discuss the two, the rules of recommendations, right?
Right.
Right. So, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to discuss when we discuss.
Okay. Okay. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So.